Good evening and welcome to our meeting tonight. We're so thrilled to see everyone in the chamber. This is going to be a really special night, as you will soon see, but we will first begin with introductions on my right.
Good evening, I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board. Welcome.
Good evening, I am Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good evening, my name is Yvette Townsend Ingram. I'm your County Commissioner, serving you at large. Good evening to everyone and welcome.
Good evening. We love it when it's crowded. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell. I represent North Mecklenburg, which is District One, Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte. Welcome.
Good evening and welcome. I am George Dunlap, elected by the people of District Three.
Good evening, my name is Lee Altman. I serve at large and as Vice Chair, and bring greetings also on behalf of our Chairman, Mark Darrell.
Good evening and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin and I serve as a County Commissioner at large.
Good afternoon. My name is Vilma De Leek, and I represent the most powerful district in this county, and that's District Two. I would ask my seniors to stand, but they don't want to claim themselves to be seniors tonight. So will all young people stand up just a minute. Let me say thank you for being here tonight. Be blessed, be blessed.
Good evening, I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
Good evening, I'm Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell, elected by the people of District Six.
Good evening, I'm Dina DiOrio, County Manager.
Good evening, Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
All right, we begin our meetings with an invocation, and it so happens that tonight it's been assigned to me by our Chairman, so I'm going to read from a Jewish prayer for our country. "Our God and God of our ancestors, with mercy, accept our prayer on behalf of our country and its government. Pour out your blessings upon this land, upon its inhabitants, upon its leaders, its judges, officers, and officials who faithfully devote themselves to the needs of the public. Help them understand the rules of justice you have decreed, so that peace, security, happiness, and freedom will never depart from our land. God whose spirit is in all creatures, we pray that your spirit be awakened within all inhabitants of our land, uproot from our hearts hatred and malice, jealousy and strife. Plant love and companionship, peace and friendship among the many peoples in faith who dwell in our nation. Grant us the knowledge to judge justly, the wisdom to act with compassion, and the understanding and courage to root out poverty from our land. May it be your will that our land be a blessing to all who dwell on earth, and may you cause all people to dwell in friendship and freedom. Speedily fulfill the vision of your prophets, that nation shall not lift up sword against nation, neither shall they learn war anymore. For all of them, for the least of them, to the greatest shall know me." And if you wish, let us say amen. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, at this time, I'm going to talk very slowly because I'm waiting for an important person to come back to his chair. We are going to deviate slightly from our agenda to address a personnel matter that we discussed in closed session. I will turn the floor over now to Commissioner Dunlap for comments before taking a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To this community, I want to share with you that on August 8th of last year, our County Manager announced her retirement. After having announced her retirement, it was incumbent upon the Board to select a new County Manager. The Board decided that we would meet as a committee of the whole. People sometimes think that's difficult when you have nine people making a decision, but we thought it important enough that every Commissioner had an opportunity to have their say. So we met as a committee of the whole. First thing we did was to select a search firm to conduct the search. So we did an interview in that process, and as a result of that process, we selected MGT as the search firm to conduct our search. We developed a profile. After having developed the profile, the search firm put out the RFP for people to apply for the position. When that process had ended, we had more than 40 candidates wanting to serve us as Manager of Mecklenburg County. From that process, we narrowed down our possible candidates to the final couple of candidates. And I want you to know that we took extensive time, and it was an exhaustive process to make sure that we had the best candidate for Mecklenburg County. Just a little bit about what that process looked like. And these were the final candidates. They were given a scenario where they had several days to read a scenario, write a three-page, three pages about that scenario, come before us and present it within 15 minutes, answer questions about the scenario, and then answer 14 questions coming from the Board members. After they finished that process, they were given a surprise scenario. They were given 15 minutes to complete the process and come back before the Board where we ask additional questions, and then another round of 14 questions. So after that process, I am proud to say that the Board made a unanimous choice, and the unanimous choice for the Board of Commissioners for the next Manager of Mecklenburg County I want to take a minute and tell you just a little bit about Michael. You're going to get to know him better as we move through this process. Well, Michael is the Deputy County Manager for Mecklenburg County, and he works in Financial Services and Internal Support. He is responsible for providing executive oversight to the Financial Services Department, the Office of the Tax Collector, the County Assessors Office, Information Technology and Human Services. He is also responsible for the management and distribution of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Michael leads the county's Enterprise Risk Management Strategy and is accountable for financial planning and compliance throughout the organization. He joined the county in 2003 as a Management and Budget Analyst. Michael was promoted to Director of the Office of Management and Budget in 2014, and Deputy County Manager in 2020. Prior to joining the county, Michael worked for the City of Durham, Duke University, Granville County, and the North Carolina Office of the Governor. Michael holds a bachelor's degree and a Master's of Public Administration from North Carolina Central University. He has also served as the National President for the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. Madam Vice Chair, I would like to make a motion to enter into an employment contract and agreement with Michael A. Bryant as the next County Manager of Mecklenburg County upon the retirement by our current County Manager, Dina DiOrio, to be effective July 1, 2025, upon the terms and conditions as provided in the proposed employment agreement, and authorize our Chairman to execute the agreement on behalf of the county and the form presented to the Board.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Dunlap. The motion having been made and seconded, would Commissioners like to be heard? Please, I'll start on my right.
I just want to say that it was an exhaustive process. I think you could ask Michael afterwards, and he will tell you that it was an exhaustive process. And I think that we all share that we have every confidence that there's not going to be a huge learning curve. We feel confident with Mr. Bryant at the helm of our ship as County Manager. And ladies, the family, I did put in a good word for you to have an increase in your allowances for clothing and that sparkle and shine. So we are just delighted, and I say congratulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I could talk for a long time, but I'm going to be brief tonight. Thank you for your willingness to serve as County Manager. Thank you for all that we put you through. Thank you for being committed to the stability of government. Thank you for your history of fiscal discipline. Thank you for being rock solid. Thank you for your integrity. These are all really important things that we were looking for, and you are the homegrown candidate. Thank you.
Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to say that Mr. Bryant, ever since day one upon my election in 2018, you've been there. And a lot of folks don't know that the Fresh Four, who were all elected at the same time, used to spend our Saturday mornings with Mr. Bryant back in 2019, getting to learn about the budget, learn about sort of the mechanics of the county, and he was extremely available to us. And it was a very important time, and so that was just something that I'll never forget, your generosity, your integrity. And I think that it's already been said that this will be a seamless transition, because as it's also been said, 22 years you've been here. But the difference is, you've been here for 22 years, always working under someone else's leadership, and now you are going to be unleashed to have your own established leadership. And I just want to say that I'm very much looking forward to working with you and experiencing your leadership. So thank you so much for being willing to take on this huge job.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Congratulations, Michael. Congratulations to your beautiful family. I don't know if you know what you have in store for you, but I am so confident in our vote for Michael. I want to say I'm sure there'll be some criticism out there, why did you pay a search firm for a national search when you went internally? But we just wanted to make sure we have the best, and we found out we have the best. And I, Michael, you deserve this. Very happy for you, looking forward to it, and I look forward to more jokes.
Commissioner Leek.
Let me first say, where are our ancestors? I wish they were here, so they could see and know what's going on tonight. A black man is being honored to be Chairman and to lead the way for Mecklenburg County. I'm excited, son, with your family, your wife, your two children. I was here when your youngest baby was born, the day that child was born. We were all wishing for a young man, but a young lady came stepping in. All I've ever seen of this young man has been a gentleman, and a respect for women, and a respect for the job that he has. And to bring with him his family to come and help us, to lead the way, to make life just a little bit better than what it was 100 years ago. This would never have happened, and if we're not careful, we might lose it. Let's support him, let's help him, let's make sure that the staff that he has is the right staff, that they will work with him and he will work with them, because I believe we have the best staff in the country, working with Mecklenburg County. Every one of them are great. We don't have one that's slack nor one that's lazy. They're always working. So I want to say that to this body, and I guess because of my being here and being in this community for so long, I can talk about the ancestors. I can talk about the time when we didn't have the right to sit up here, and I say to myself now, if my mother and father, and my late husband, and my son could see me now, what would they say? I want to thank you, to this community, for affording me the opportunity to represent you in District Two, the most powerful district in the county, the best district in the county. So I had to say that, and I wanted to say that. My pastor's here tonight to keep me calm. Stand up Pastor, stand up Dr. Blue. That's my pastor at Little Rock Amy Zion Church. Dr. Williams was in a serious wreck, trying to cut down a tree, and he's 70 years old. He's sitting up there, so I needed to say that. So again, thanks for being here, both of you, Dr. Blue and Dr. Williams, who's been with the school system.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek.
Again, thank you for allowing me to serve. Where are their ancestors? Just keep looking, they're around here. Fannie Lou Hamer's here somewhere, because she's sick and tired of being sick and tired. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek. Commissioner Griffin.
Well, first of all, thank the family for giving you, to us, and to the entire community, all 1.2 million residents of Mecklenburg County is now in your hands. We've had a number of conversations, the same conversations to our current County Manager, I'm just transferring them over to our new County Manager. But truly, and also get that book off your bookshelf, When Trying Hard Is Not Enough, so pull that back down. I'm excited about this journey that we're going to take together. I'm certainly not concerned about any comments from the public about our selection. I can stand in front of anyone or anybody to defend that selection. I remember as Chair of the School Board, we made a selection, an internal selection, because it was what's in the best interest of those children, students, as well as this community. I think our selection of Mr. Bryant continues in that mode of doing what's best for our entire county. So I cannot say any more than what's been already said, but I'm confident that the 1.2 million residents of Mecklenburg County will be happy as we continue to move forward. Mecklenburg County has a lot to be thankful for, and if you travel anywhere in the world and you come back here, you understand why we are so proud of Mecklenburg County and all of your contributions over the number of years you've had with us. We look forward to that continued commitment and dedication. I'll say this to all of the folk who are younger than me, take care of your family. Family, he's going to need your support, but I'll make sure he gets out of the office so he can take care of family first. So I appreciate you. Thank you so very much for your willingness to serve in that leadership position. Thank you, Michael.
Commissioner Dunlap.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank this Board for allowing me the privilege and the pleasure of chairing the Search Committee. I think most would agree that the process went rather smoothly, and I agree with them that it was an exhaustive process. Let me just thank you, Michael, for your diligence, for the way you presented yourself. There's no question about your skills and ability. I think we all agree that they're there. But as Mr. Griffin said, you're going to need our support, you're going to need this community's support, and we'll be behind you. You know, there's no greater testament to a leader's ability than to have somebody follow them in the role of leadership. So for those of you who didn't know, our County Manager came up the same road. In fact, for those, if you think about it, every time she got promoted, she promoted Michael Bryant behind her. And so, Dina, thank you for your tutelage, for your mentorship, for instilling in Michael what it needs or what it takes to be a good County Manager. We thank you for that. Michael, I know you know the task before you. You will become the County Manager of the ninth-largest county in the United States. That's an awesome task. But just know that you have nine dedicated people who will be behind you and support the work that you do, so that Mecklenburg County will continue to be the shining light on the hill. Thank you so much for agreeing to accept this position.
And before I round it out with my comments, I would like to turn to our County Manager for her reflections at this very momentous occasion.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and let me not be the first, but I think, well, maybe the first, to say congratulations to you. Mike and I talked pretty early on when this first decision was made, and I can't tell you how proud I am of you. He's been here for 22 years, I've been here for 18, and I've known Michael the entire time I've been with Mecklenburg County. And as Commissioner Dunlap said, I promoted him twice, so obviously I saw something in him, but I've watched him grow over the last 18 years. He's become a tremendous leader, and what I love about Michael more than anything is he loves feedback, and this is really a note for all of you. He loves feedback, and he takes feedback well, and he acts on it appropriately. And so I think that's one of the things that makes him so successful, is that he wants to learn, he wants to grow, and he wants to be better. And I think Mecklenburg County is in really good hands, and I just want to thank you for all the great work that you did to get us to this point and to meet my timeline of April 1. I'm really happy about that, so thank you.
Thank you, County Manager DiOrio. So last but not least, I would like to speak for myself and also share with you and everyone who's listening that I'm getting ecstatic texts from our Chairman, Mark Darrell, who had to be traveling, but he's watching right now, and I know that he's so feeling the joy of this moment and, you know, here with us 100% for this moment for you. You know, I agree with everything my colleagues have said, and what I would add is, I'm so impressed by what I perceive as your just absolute rigorous code of ethics. I feel like you have so much integrity, and that you have this unswerving focus on just what's in the best interest of the public, because there's a lot going on here, a lot of people who want a lot of different things, but I believe that all you are focused on is being the absolute best public servant to the community. And so I really love that singular focus that I know you hold. I love it that you have really deep roots in this community with your family and the way you show up in the community, as a citizen, as a resident, with your children in, you know, Little League and that sort of thing. I mean, I really appreciate that about you. I think that you are very much ready on day one. We had a bunch of wonderful candidates, and we are grateful to all of them who put themselves forward, and they had wonderful talents. You are going to have the ability to build upon the tremendous work of our current County Manager, to whom we are so grateful. But as Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell said, take it to the next level with your vision, you know, for us to see what you've, you know, where your leadership will take us. I believe you're a great relationship builder with our partners in the city and in the towns and CMS and private, in the private sector, and with all of our philanthropic partners. We have to do all this work together. And you are an expert in the budget. You helped us navigate our crisis in the recession in 2009, and there's a lot of uncertainty in the community and the nation, and we don't know what the future holds. But what I know is that you are the best person to help us manage any coming storm. And I hope that inspires confidence in the community, because it definitely inspires confidence in we who know you best. So I think that's all I had to say, but just congratulations, and this will kick off a celebration that will not end tonight. So at this point, I'm ready to vote, if everyone is ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Dunlap, please raise your right hand. And that vote is unanimous. Mr. Bryant, if you'd like to come give comments, and then afterwards, maybe you'll come up front, and we'll all take a picture together.
You know, I've stood behind this podium for over 20 years. I've never been speechless until tonight. Thank you. Thank you for your kind words. It is greatly appreciated. Let me begin my remarks by thanking my Lord Jesus Christ, from where all my blessings flow from. It's God's grace, God's mercy, and God's favor that I am standing before you tonight as the next County Manager. You know, my God, He doesn't call the qualified, He qualifies the called. I'd like to thank the County Commission for your vote of confidence in appointing me to this vital role. I look forward to collaborating with you as a commission to serve this entire community that I love. This is a family affair for me. There's no way that I am standing here today without the support of my lovely family. I want to express my deepest gratitude to my wife of 27 years. Y'all pray for her. LaShonda, she's been my best friend for 30 years. Without her support and her sacrifice, none of this is possible, none of it. I wouldn't be standing here today without LaShonda's encouragement and her belief in me. She has believed in me when I didn't believe in myself, when folks have doubted me, when folks have spoke negatively about me. This woman has always been in my corner, by my side, supporting me, encouraging me, making me believe that I can do anything that I set my mind to. For your support, I'm grateful, LaShonda, and I love you, you know that. To my babies, my big babies, my daughters, each one of you are my inspiration. You motivate me to press a little more, to work a little harder. I love all you dearly, and each one of you have made my world a better place simply by being in it. You are truly God's greatest gift to me, and Daddy loves y'all. I want to speak to our workforce. As I've told the County Commission over 20 years, regardless of the position I held, I always say, and it's been said tonight, but I'm going to say it again, I'm going to underscore it, we have the best workforce in the nation. And now, I have the honor to serve as their manager. For over 22 years, as a team, we've experienced some good times, and as a team, we experienced some difficult times. And with regards to those difficult times, we always met the challenge, we rose to the challenge, and came out even stronger and more resilient as an organization. I can't wait to put in motion all of the wonderful things, team, that we're going to accomplish together as one team. Mr. County Attorney, Madam Clerk, thank you for your support and consultation over the years, you and your teams. Please know that is greatly appreciated. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Dina R. Diorio, lost lady, as I call her. Dina, I thank you for your support and the many opportunities that you have given to me over the years, from the bottom of my heart, from that first conversation that we had, you know what I'm talking about, all the way to now. Thank you, Dina, for what you've done for me professionally as well as personally. The opportunities, Dina, that you presented to me, promoted me as your Budget Director, then your Deputy County Manager, supporting me as I served as the National President for the Government Finance Officers Association, traveling all around the world, is a major reason why I am the incoming major, manager, and thank you, Dina. I'll end my remarks by saying that I will proudly step into this role with humility and honor. As one of my mentors stressed to me, and so many others, some of them are in the chamber tonight, we exist for one reason and for one reason only, and that is to serve the residents of this community. And I would do that with the highest level of integrity and the greatest level of professionalism. Thank you.
All right, Michael, why don't you come down front? Mr. Bryant, why don't you come on down front with your family, and we'll take a picture?
Let's just go do this quickly.
What do I do with my papers and my phone?
All right. Well, that's not something you see every day. God willing, you'll be in the role for 18 years like our present manager, so thank you again. All right, we are now ready to move on in our agenda, and I will now turn to Commissioner Townsend Ingram to present a proclamation that we have.
Good evening again to everyone. It's my distinct honor and privilege to read this proclamation. This is my first time, y'all, so I'm really giddy about the type of proclamation that it is and to whom it is being given to.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if there was someone here to receive the tobacco, Take Down Tobacco Day proclamation, whoever wants to receive that, come on down to this speaker's wall. Thank you. All right, thank you, Commissioner, you can continue.
Since there's speakers two there, we wanted to do the speakers first, so I don't know.
Uh, I think we have the Commissioner read first and then the speakers. Yes.
All right. Mecklenburg County, North Carolina proclamation, whereas tobacco use remains the leading preventable cause of death and disease in the United States, killing more than 490,000 people every year, and whereas 95% of adult tobacco users start before the age of 21, with 90% starting before age 18, and whereas nicotine harms developing brains and its use during adolescence can disrupt the formation of brain circuits that control attention and learning and increase the risk for lifelong addiction. And whereas 1 in 6 high school students in Charlotte Mecklenburg schools in 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey reported being current users of electronic vapor products such as e-cigs, e-cigarettes, vape pens, e-hukas or hookah pens, and whereas using e-cigarette and vaping products can worsen depression in youth and can contribute in development to development, maintenance, and recurrence of anxiety disorders. And whereas, as of 2023, there are nearly 1,000 tobacco retail sites such as convenience stores, gas stations, smoke and vape shops, et cetera, in Mecklenburg County. A review of a sample of these tobacco retailers revealed that more than 70% were located within a half mile of K through 12 schools. And whereas the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners supports North Carolina protecting our youth from easy access to addictive tobacco products by raising the age of purchase to 21 and creating a tobacco retail permitting system to help prevent sales to minors. And whereas the Mecklenburg County, Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners is committed to fighting for healthier, equitable, future-free of addiction for all young people and supports year-round youth tobacco prevention best practices and policies and preventions, now therefore be it resolved that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 1st, 2025 as Take Down Tobacco Day of Action in Mecklenburg County and commend its observance to all citizens this first day of April 2025, signed the Honorable Mark D. Jarrell, Chair, Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners. So moved.
Second. Having been moved and properly seconded, before we take a vote, we'll hear from our speakers, and also I saw on my list that David LeGrand is here for this as well, so welcome to my old principal, if you want to, my kid's old principal, young principal, if you'd like to come down to the speaker's wall. And then do we have Ms. Monahan, Reggie Singleton, and Austin Thompson? If you are in the chamber and you're here for this, you're also welcome to come down.
Reggie Singleton is there.
Right there.
Yeah. All right, so are they signed up as a group, this side?
No. Oh, they are, they are receiving, if I'm not mistaken.
They're receiving it. I just want to understand the time.
They are the actual speakers that will get three minutes.
I understand. So they are a group, or are they signed up as individuals?
No, they're individuals. There is two people as a group, but they would only get three minutes.
All right, so if you'll, they each have three minutes?
Yes.
All right, please, please begin. Say your name at the beginning of your comments, and thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners. I am David LeGrand, and I stand before you today not only as an educator, but as someone who has commit, dedicated my career to shaping the lives of young people in various roles. Throughout my years of service, I have worked with students from diverse backgrounds and have seen the fir- I've seen firsthand the challenges they face as they navigate their formative years. I am here to speak in strong support of the bill to raise the legal age to purchase tobacco, including vapes, to 21, and to create tobacco retail permitting system for North Carolina. Thank you for your support of this critical state action. In every role that I have held, my focus has been on the success and well-being of our youth. As a teacher and coach, I work directly with students, helping them develop not only their academic and athletic skills, but also their character and decision-making abilities. As an assistant principal and principal, I witnessed the direct impact of both positive and negative choices on students' futures. I saw young lives filled with potential, yet too often that potential was derailed by harmful influences such as tobacco and vaping. As a recruiter, executive director, associate superintendent, and American Heart Association Board member, I have worked on a larger scale to shape educational policies and programs that promote student success. I've been deeply involved in initiatives that aim to support students' healthy, safety, and overall well-being. Throughout these roles, I have seen how addiction can take hold at an early age and create lasting consequences that affect not only individual students, but their entire families and communities. In my classrooms, hallways, and schools, and at school events, I have observed the alarming rise of vaping. Vaping has become a gateway to addiction, putting a new generation at risk of chronic health issues, from respiratory problems to developmental concerns. By raising the age to purchase tobacco and vapes to 21, we can make it significantly harder for teenagers to access these products, sending a powerful message that we care about their health and their future. In conclusion, I appreciate you as a commission, commission, for demonstrating your commitment to our youth by signing a proclamation to Take Down Tobacco Day of Action. I look forward to continued efforts in education and policy actions to protect our youth from the dangers of tobacco. Together, we can safeguard the next generation from addiction and provide them with an opportunity to lead healthier, more successful lives.
Thank you.
Let us stand united in ensuring a brighter, healthier future for our young people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Principal LeGrand. You're always a principal to me. All right, so Mr. Singleton? I'm sorry, what's your name, sir?
Austin Thompson.
Yes, sir, please, please begin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Thompson. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a participant in the Males Place Organization, which is led by Barbara Reggie Singleton. The Males Place has several key areas of focus, including mentorship, agriculture, and life skill development, and most important today, social justice. The Males Place strives to empower young black men like me, which empowers young black leaders who are rooted in heritage and who are committed to social responsibility. But today, I would like to talk about the industry that builds wealth on deception, addiction, illness, and death, the tobacco industry. For decades, big tobacco has thrived, not by improving lives, but by exploiting them. When the truth regarding the impact became impossible to ignore, they pivoted targeting a younger audience, using flavored vapes and funding misleading studies to downplay the risks. They claimed smoking was a personal choice. Remember, addiction is the goal. Let's start with some facts. According to the World Health Organization, tobacco kills more than 8 million people each year. That's mothers, fathers, siblings, and friends. According to the American Lung Association, tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable death and disease in North Carolina and across the country. With traditional cigarette sales declining, they found a new market and a new problem, vaping. The new generation using flavors, sleek designs, and targeting advertisement, advertising to make vaping seem harmless, safer than cigarettes, and even cool. Despite these risks, many teens continue to use these products, often without fully understanding these consequences. They are being set up. The ease of access, peer pressure, and lack of education on these products make it easy to fall into addiction, and once hooked, it's incredibly hard to quit. Let's discuss some of the impacts. Number one, learning. Nicotine changes how the brain develops, especially in young people. Number two, athletic performance. Your lungs are everything in sports. Number three, future job opportunities. Number four, financial impact. It's expensive. Number five, personal health, cancer, heart attack, and strokes. For decades, the tobacco industry has used strategic advertising, sponsorships, and even free samples to hook black smokers, predatory marketing, and sattering our communities. So, what can we do? We need policies that limit the number of tobacco and vaping retailers in our communities, raise the minimum tobacco purchasing age to 21 nationwide. Will policies alone solve this issue? No. Encourage youth to make informed choices. It's time to put health over.
Did you want to get to speak? Okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Monahan.
Hello, good evening. I'm Alidia Monahan. I'm pursuing a Master's of Public Health at UNC Charlotte. I also am a graduate assistant at UNC Charlotte Center for Wellness Promotion, and I work directly with young students who are taking action to change their relationship with substance use, including vaping and tobacco use. Young adult tobacco and nicotine use is an important issue to me as a young student who is, who has seen the impact on my peers and friends because of my interest in health policy and because of the prevention work that I do on campus. The federal minimum tobacco sales age was raised to 21 in December of 2019. As of October 2024, 43 states have aligned with this federal law, but North Carolina has not. The 2023 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, conducted by SAMSA, reported that 30% of young adults aged 18 to 35 use nicotine and tobacco products. According to UNC Charlotte's Spring 2024 College Health Assessment, just over 30% of students reported using tobacco and nicotine products, including vapes, hookah, cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and more. Additionally, UNC Charlotte's who reported using in the past three months was 14.8% used e-cigarettes and vapes, while 8% used cigarettes. The overall health outcomes for young adults using tobacco and nicotine products are harmful. According to the CDC, tobacco and nicotine use among young adults can lead to health outcomes such as cycles of addiction, disruption in brain development, anxiety, lung problems, and cancer. An estimated 2% of UNC Charlotte students reported being in recovery from substance use, and we know this measure is underreported because of the stigma around recovery support. We would like to thank you as our county commissioners in signing the Take Down Tobacco Day of Action proclamation, which includes our support for raising the age to purchase tobacco from 18 to 21, creating a tobacco retail permitting system for North Carolina, and establishing tobacco sales permit system with compliance requirements that track tobacco products being sold and how, and hold non-compliant sellers accountable. These actions will help protect youth and young adults by making it harder for them to purchase these products and become addicted to the nicotine and tobacco in the long run. Thank you for listening and for providing space for our concerns, and thank you for supporting tobacco prevention.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here. I have one more speaker, Maya Henderson, to speak to this, and then the group that's going to actually receive it will have an opportunity to be heard. So thank you for your patience, and thank you, Ms. Henderson.
Hi, everyone. I promised myself I wouldn't cry, but I'm just very excited to share. My name is Maya Henderson, and I'm a member of the Clearing the Smoke Mecklenburg County Tobacco Free Coalition. And I would like to share some more information about our community coalition, which launched in 2024, and our support of the Take Down Tobacco Day of Action proclamation that was presented this evening. Our coalition promotes health equity by working to create opportunities in which all people in our community, regardless of race, ethnicity, age, income, or identity, have a fair and equal chance to breathe clean air where they work, live, pray, and pray, and are free of overexposure to tobacco marketing and menthol tobacco, with access to culturally appropriate tobacco dependence treatment. Our coalition is committed to raising awareness about how tobacco use is continuing to harm our community and about the drivers of tobacco disparities, especially in the Black African-American communities. We will work to build the capacity to advocate for policies and services to address these disparities. I'm here, by the grace of God. Jesus saved my life and delivered me from smoking addiction hell. I was a smoker for ten years until my heavenly Father pointed me in the direction of a solution, a resource that works. Allen Carr's Easy Way to Stop Smoking is a program that is scientifically proven and utilized by the UK government, achieving unprecedented results. After learning the method and reading the book, I was able to stop smoking painlessly, easily, and without any withdrawal symptoms, and it's been over two years since I've had a cigarette. And I know that we fight not against flesh and blood, but the powers and principalities of evil that rule this nation. And so I'm here to say that there is an evil out here, and it is coming for our children. That's the main thing that I learned from Allen Carr, is that evil is very real. And these corporations, they don't care about us. They don't care about who they kill. All they care about is making a profit, but we can fight back. This is how I fight my battles, and as soon as I got free, what did I want to do? I wanted to help my brothers and sisters and pull them up with me. And I needed a place to do that, and somehow I found the Clearing the Smoke Coalition. And I found community, and I found togetherness, and I found people who were able to take action with me and show me how to do it. And most of all, I found that I'm not alone and that ordinary people just like me can make change. Join us. Let's clear the smoke.
Thank you. All right. All right. So at this time, we'll hear from the people who are here to receive the proclamation. Then we'll take the vote and thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Alela Barton. I'm a senior this year, and I am representing Olympic High School this year. And I want to talk about something that is really putting millions of people at risk, which is vaping. It is often advertised as an alternative to smoking, a trendy habit, or even a harmless pastime. But the truth is vaping is really far from harmless, and it is beyond dangerous. And right now, over 2.5 million middle schoolers, high schoolers, and even some elementary school students are vaping today, and they are losing their lives. They are having terrible effects to it. I wanted to use an example that if you know what Myers Park High School is, you can walk outside of Myers Park and you can find Ariz Fine Foods. You can find all these great places. But if you leave Olympic, you find a place to buy vapes and e-cigarettes. So they are not tailoring to our community. They're not tailoring to the people that care. And that's an example I wanted to share with everyone today. But most of these places, they use dangerous chemicals like formaldehyde and heavy metals, and this is literally what is killing us. So I just wanted to thank the Mecklenburg Board of Commissioners for recognizing this issue and how it affects the youth and supporting the state policy to increase the age of purchase to 21, creating tobacco retail. It's just giving us a bigger opportunity to saving lives. So I just wanted to thank you guys, and I want to keep it quick, but thank you so much.
My name is Barry Terry, and I'm here because the youth vaping is growing, and it's an issue at our school. We created a program called D-Cloud at Olympic, and it's just to help students, like, really, who have been vaping and are having trouble, like, if their friend's vaping, and just to bring in students, just to help them. So we created this really cool program, and we started with, like, mostly it's for, like, students who want to build things and, like, create a program. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, guys, and yeah.
Thank you, elected officials. It doesn't get any more real than this. I mean, they're coming to you. They're telling you, this is the voices of our youth that are speaking up. My name's Todd Glickman, and I'm the counselor who gets the privilege to work with these students at Olympic High School through the Student Assistance Program. The Student Assistance Program is a department in CMS implemented to help our students and their families with the risk of substance use and dependency. There are only six student assistance program counselors in a school system of more than 144,000 students. It is a big task, but one that is worth taking on. We worked tirelessly with our administrators, our community members, and the student body to curb the use of e-cigarettes and vaping. It takes all our resources to fight the battle against e-cigarettes and vapes in our schools, a battle that has been referred to as an epidemic. So I'm here today not only as a CMS student assistance program counselor, but also as a parent of four who all attend CMS schools. We know e-cigarettes and vaping affects brain development and can lead to addiction. We know e-cigarettes and vaping can lead to long-term heart disease, lung cancer, other chronic illnesses, as well as, and maybe most importantly, mental health concerns. Why wait to establish interventions where we can work together to ratify prevention today? We can raise the minimum age of tobacco sales. We can establish a tobacco sales permit system. We can strengthen enforcement. We can increase compliance requirements. We can set legal penalties. The ease of our youth obtaining such products might never fully go away, but we can make a difference even if it's just chipping away at it piece by piece. Together as a community, we can delay or eliminate entirely the onset of dependency, pain, and suffering for our youth, for our parents, for one another. It is with much gratitude that we are here tonight to be heard by our board of commissioners, so thank you. Most of all, thank you, Barry and Alela, and all the students at Olympic High School's D-Cloud Task Force, and to the school staff and the parents who fight for the safety of our children every single day. Let our voices be heard, and thank you again for hearing us this evening.
Thank you to our speakers, all, and especially the young people. You are an inspiration. And keep at it. The motion having been properly made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes. Next up, I will turn. Oh, sorry, please come down to accept the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your passion.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Hundred percent agree.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good to see you.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and I failed to let the commissioners weigh in before we voted. So let me take a step back, and Commissioner Powell wanted to be heard, and I know Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, so.
To all the people that showed up, it really is powerful to me. When I was on the park commission and we were trying to have smoke-free parks, there was so much resistance, and I remember Dr. Palchow talking about, like, you know, we were successful in getting smoke-free parks, but he was talking about the worry of vaping. And it's all coming true, and it is an epidemic. And the first time that I ever went to speak in public was related to breathing. When Austin Thompson said lungs are everything in sports, like, lungs are everything. If you can't breathe, you can't really have a good quality of life lugging around your oxygen tank, if you make it, if you can even lug around your oxygen tank. So I really appreciate the passion here. I think we need to, like, however we use media to show what human suffering looks like, I think that a lot of people miss that. They think, oh, they're just these passionate people that are trying to get rid of tobacco products. It's way more than that. It's human suffering. And so what can we do to prevent human suffering? And this is like, it really touches me that the audience is so full of people that care about this because your lungs are everything. And while you couldn't finish your speech, Austin Thompson, because of the three minutes, please email it to us because it matters. And you really had excellent points that I think matter to young people, and you have a great mentor with Reggie. We were in a walking competition, and I can tell his lungs are clean because we really wanted to win. We were the board blazers, and we couldn't catch up. And anyway, you have a great mentor. There was a sign at Harris Teeter the other day while I was waiting at customer service, and it had this giant sign at Harris Teeter, and look for it if you go there. It talks about all the dangers of tobacco products. And then I was looking at the prices, and if the price didn't scare you, the sign should scare you. And so I was looking at the sign, and I thought, who could do this? But if you get people while they're young and they're hooked, it's hard to get out of it. And so it just means a lot to me that you're here. Chronic disease prevention is really important, and this is an important step. Thank you for being here. Let's figure out how to do better on reaching young people before it goes to suffering. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Powell, for your words. I couldn't say anything better than what Commissioner Powell's just said. But I just, I really wanted to just say thank you to the young people who are stepping outside of what might be considered cool. I know that that's not easy to do, and you guys are showing leadership, and you're showing guts, and you're just, you know, you're just doing something that's not easy to do. And I just want you to know how much respect I have for that. And I want you to know that this turnout of purple shirts, this is a really good turnout. You guys have done an awesome job, and I hope that you guys will continue your work and hope you'll continue to reach out to your elected leaders and tell them what's important to you because this kind of statement really does matter. So thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
Let me first say thank you to the parents who are here. How many parents do we have here with their children? Stand up, parents. Thank you for sacrifice. Don't sit down yet. Please don't. I want to say thank you for being here with your children. This is important. I'm hoping that when the news show this at six o'clock, that they will show the parents who's here with their children and that you support what they're doing and what the system is doing. So I can't say this enough. Now, when I saw all those people across there, I said, oh, my God. But smoking is a dangerous problem. Across this country, we are seeing fires that we've never seen before. So young people, support your friends, your boyfriends, your girlfriends, and the clubs and organizations. Spend that money otherwise rather than buying cigarettes. I think they're twenty in a pack. And you stop smoking cigarettes, then you start smoking something else. So please don't kill yourselves with that smoke and cigarettes. And again, let me say thank you to the parents who are here tonight in support of your children. Will your children come? Stand up now. Don't you sit yet. I want the children to stand up. Thank you, young people, for coming up and speaking.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Just ditto to the other comments, but I certainly want to recognize Dr. Scott and your team for supporting this effort. Of course, the students are fabulous and those in the audience. But Dr. Scott, just stand up in your team, just so we can recognize you. He's our public health. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I would like to turn to my Commissioner Griffin, who has done so many important things in his life, but one of them is serving as a guardian ad litem. And so for that reason, he will be reading our Joint Proclamation on Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you, madam. Vice Chair, I have this pledge of reading this proclamation. Not sure if anybody's here to receive the proclamation. If so, just come on down. Oh, okay. Sloane Crawford, Angelica Foster, and Keedy Jackson?
Kennedy.
Kennedy Jackson. Oh, okay. City of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County, Joint Proclamation. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. And whereas all children deserve to have a safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities that foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a public responsibility, affecting both the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children to ensure all children grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, we, via Alexander Lyles, Mayor of Charlotte, and Mark Jarrell, Chair of the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Witness our hands and the official seals of the City of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County, via Alexander Lyles, Mayor, Mark Jarrell, Chair, Mecklenburg Board of County Commission. Madam Vice Chair, I move this proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. The motions having been made and seconded, are any commissioners wanting to be heard?
I want to say something.
Commissioner Lee.
When we talk about children, we're trying to save our next generation. When I said, where are the ancestors? Those who paved the way for us to be here. We are in a dangerous setting in this country with our young people and especially with our Black kids killing and people shooting in the neighborhood. It's out of order. That's their bloodline. I don't understand how we've gotten to this point that we don't like each other to the point that we're ready to kill each other off, and these are children. If we listen to the news, a six-year-old was shot by the father and was killed, and then the father committed suicide. What has happened to? What has happened to our country and our people and our parents? And that's why I had the parents to stand up. We appreciate you being with your children. We appreciate you. You don't have to birth children to take care of them. You just take somebody's child and support them and tell them the right way to go. It doesn't take that long to do it, not by what we do and not by what we say, but make sure that we listen to our senior citizens. I've never known a country to sit as America's sitting, and some of you disrespect senior citizens. It's unacceptable, the way we treat senior citizens. And if you live long enough, you'll get to be one, and you better hope that you get to be one to carry the bloodline on, trying to get rid of people who have experience and been here and helped you get where you are. I'm just so vexed with what's happening and community and people who are not doing what they ought to do to help us, to help the community, but trying to destroy those of us who are trying to do it. So all I'm saying to us, wake up. Wake up and take care of your children. You have them or you don't have them. Neighborhoods belong to us. Don't get mad at me because I'm saying this. It's a fact. Every day you can look at the paper and listen to the news, somebody's been killed in our community. Every day. Not a half day, but the full day. So thank you for allowing me to say this, and please be a committee of one to save one or some of us from ourselves. And thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to say this, but we as elected officials got to do a better job and stop fighting each other and disliking each other.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Leake. Any other commissioner want to be heard? All right, before we hear from our speakers, I do just want to recognize anyone who works for the Department of Social Services who's in the chamber. If you don't mind standing, I would love to give you a round of applause. Thank you for everything you do. We appreciate you so much. And I say this as a former staff attorney at the Council for Children's Rights. I saw firsthand over and over again that our DSS workers are sometimes the only thing that stands between a child and death, and it's a very, very hard job, and we're just so grateful to you. So now let us hear from our speakers who are here to receive the proclamation.
Good evening, distinguished members of the Mecklenburg County Board of County Commissioners and respected Madam Clerk and Deputy Clerk. My name is Angelica Foster, and I serve as a guardian ad litem supervisor for Judicial District 26. I'm also a UNC Chapel Hill Masters of Public Administration candidate. Today I'm here because I serve as the Chair for Mecklenburg County Child Abuse Prevention Team, which is a coalition of child-serving organizations and individuals who have joined forces to help build public awareness around the issue of child abuse awareness and prevention. On behalf of the Mecklenburg County Child Abuse Prevention Team, I want to sincerely thank all of you, as well as Mayor Lyles, for this proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Your commitment to raising awareness and supporting the well-being of children and families in our community is truly appreciated. In 2024, Mecklenburg County received 17,123 calls to Mecklenburg County Helpline. Youth and family services completed 8,123 assessments. Preventing child abuse is a responsibility. We all share this responsibility. We are all mandated reporters. As a mother and a generational cycle breaker of abuse, I know firsthand that every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, and by working together, we can create a stronger, more protective community for our youngest, most vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Good evening, all. Thank you so much for this time. My name is Kennedy Jackson. I am a PhD candidate at Carolina University and clinical therapist specializing in working with behavioral adolescents in Mecklenburg and Gaston County who are managing mental health diagnoses and behavioral challenges, particularly those who have experienced trauma. Sitting as the co-chair for the Child Abuse Prevention Team, we are standing united today to recognize the critical issue of child abuse and its profound impact on our community. It is essential that we continue to raise awareness, support victims, and strengthen systems that prevent abuse. Together, we can create a safer environment for all children and ensure they have the opportunity to grow, heal, and thrive. Thank you for your commitment to this cause. I would like to invite you, each of you, along with the entire Mecklenburg County community, to join us for the Child Abuse Awareness Kickoff Press Conference and Pinwheel Planting on April 3 at 10:00 a.m. right here at the Mecklenburg County Government Center. This event serves as a powerful reminder of our collective commitment to ensuring every child has their opportunity to thrive. Thank you so much for your time and your commitment.
Before we carry the motion, one thing, keeping my fingers crossed that the media might cover this one thing, can you tell the public what it means to be a mandatory reporter and how to do that? What is that duty, and who does it extend to?
To be a mandated reporter is a duty for all of North Carolina residents. You, if you suspect or see abuse, you are mandated to report it, whether you are calling your county's hotline or you're dialing 911, you are mandated to report it. You are not supposed to turn a blind eye.
Right, so if you're a neighbor, or a teacher, or anybody, anywhere, we're all mandated reporters.
We are all mandated reporters.
Thank you. Thank you.
And there's more information on mechforkids.org. We have all kinds of resources and prevention tips so that you're able to see and say, you know, this is what's going on.
All right, we're going to vote, and then we'll have you come down and get the proclamation. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thanks so much, and you can come down this way. I already have one. Thank you, thank you. Yes. She's clapping for you. Thank you. Great job today.
Thank you for your service. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service and your research.
Okay, so we had some proclamations that had a lot of speakers, but that was actually not our official public appearance period. That's where we are now. So I'm going to read the rules, and then we'll have our speakers who can start making their way, beginning with Jonathan Johnston, Alexandra Arrington, Diana Williams, and Tommy Nichols. You can start proceeding down to the speakers' wall. Public appearance is the period during the Board's regular meeting that members of the public are provided the opportunity to speak on matters not appearing on the agenda. Members of the public who appear during public appearance portion of a regular meeting may discuss any matter within the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners except for the following types of matters. A matter which appears on the agenda of that meeting of the Board. A matter which concerns the candidacy of any person for public office, including the candidacy of the person appearing before the Board. A request that the Board considers of funding a certain program or activity either from the current budget or by inclusion in a future budget, such as requests, such requests would be made at the Board's annual budget public hearing. The time limit for speaking is three minutes, and our timer is broken today, but our clerk will ding you if you go over. Unless there are four or more speakers who wish to speak concerning the same matter, in which case, all persons wishing to speak on the same matter will be considered a group and given a total of 10 minutes. The Board reserves the right to alter these rules on a case-by-case basis as necessary for the efficient and effective conduct of business. Members of the Board will not engage in dialogue with public appearance speakers. Comments will be received and followed up on as applicable by county staff and/or members of the Board. Handouts and/or tokens shall be given to the clerk for distribution to the Board at the conclusion of the meeting, and members of the public can also access and view the meeting on the government channel or online at watch.meccity.gov. So, Mr. Johnston, you are up.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jonathan Johnston, and I serve as a faith leader in the Charlotte area for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I'm pleased to introduce an initiative called My Baby for Me, which is dedicated to supporting pregnant women and new mothers in East Charlotte. North Carolina ranks 40th in the nation for infant mortality, and Mecklenburg County is no exception to this crisis. In his 2024 report to this Board, County Health Director Dr. Reynard Washington highlighted the county's ongoing struggle to reduce maternal and infant mortality, low birth weights, and preterm births. In East Charlotte, the infant mortality rate is 12.6 per 1,000 births, more than twice the national average. We appreciate the organizations already tackling this crisis in our county. My Baby for Me aims to collaborate with these groups and expand support and resources for mothers and babies in need. Sponsored by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and in collaboration with A Chance to Learn and the Galilee Center, My Baby for Me is a ZIP Code-targeted initiative that inspires, educates, and connects women with vital resources. At no cost, the Church provides a senior volunteer couple with healthcare experience and additional support volunteers, an established curriculum for teaching safe pregnancy, infant care, and early childhood development, and budget support to address gaps in food, housing, and transportation. My Baby for Me gatherings, held twice weekly, provide a warm meal and a welcoming space for mothers, their children, and significant others, and directly addresses prevalent issues faced by many young mothers in East Charlotte, including depression, anxiety, confusion, loneliness, and fear. These gatherings strengthen women through love and a framework we call the Four Bs: Belong, helping them feel connected through the sisterhood of motherhood; Believe, inspiring them to believe in their capability to successfully nurture a child and experience joy; Be Aware, educating them on health and safety risks during pregnancy and the baby's first year; And Become, inspiring confidence that their inherent resilience will enable them to become the mothers they aspire to be. In its first 18 months of operation in Memphis and Nashville, My Baby for Me served over 100 women, provided thousands of meals, rides, and grocery bags, and saw 91 healthy babies born with zero maternal or infant deaths in these high-risk ZIP codes. We hope to replicate that success when we begin classes at the Galilee Center on April 28. I invite each of you and the community to help us reach the women who need this support and to stand with us at the official launch and press conference this Friday, April 4 at 10:00 a.m. at the Galilee Center. Together, we can give every baby the best possible start in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, and if Tommy Nichols and James Lockhart can go ahead and come down to the speakers' wall, and now we'll hear from Ms. Arrington and Ms. Williams.
Good afternoon to the Board of County Commissioners, sending greetings to Chairman Jarrell, excuse me. Oh, I need to speak up. I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm Dr. Alexandra Arrington, and sending greetings to the Board of County Commissioners and to Chairman Jarrell in his absence. I have the distinguished pleasure of having co-founded six years ago this month and to currently lead the Money Magnets Club, which is a nonprofit that encourages entrepreneurship and financial literacy among elementary school students here locally.
Good evening. Happy Financial Literacy Month. I am Diana Williams, and I get to lead Fearless Brown Girls, and we are an organization that is creating financially competent and independent girls here in Mecklenburg County, and we're doing that through our programming that is centered around financial literacy and personal development.
So I was thankful to hear so many calls to the primary purposes for why we are sharing our public comments today, even from the opening invocation from Vice Chair Altman on eradicating poverty, right? Financial Literacy Month, which I also like to call Financial Health Month, among other things that we celebrate this April, is vitally important, and it's an aspect of overall health that needs more attention. I get to lead this amazing organization because helping children develop financial literacy acumen young is the way to approach this. So we do an anecdotal poll wherever I go, and County Commissioners, you please feel free to participate as you're able and the rules allow. How many, by show of hands, how many people took a personal finance course or a financial literacy course in their K-12 education experience? And none of the county commissioners? Maybe one? Okay. So, by taking a look around, the majority of hands were not raised. How many people had to make a financial decision today or this week? Right, so you see the disparity. So the majority of why we're here is to, number one, thank you all as the Board of County Commissioners and the larger Mecklenburg County government for investing and prioritizing support for people's financial health, which we define by Drexel University's definition as a comprehensive assessment of resources that includes the ability to meet basic needs and to accomplish opportunities to save and build wealth. We really and truly believe that things like the Way Forward Plan through the Office of Public Health, that strategically prioritizes financial literacy as a function of getting in front of violence and preventing violence, is a way to be able to prioritize financial health. And so we want to thank you all for doing that and implore you in this upcoming budget to continue prioritizing financial health and investment in this specifically as a function, again, of overall health of individuals in Mecklenburg County. Wallet Hub did a study this year that says, out of 100 major metros across the nation, Charlotte is number five for people in financial distress, and it goes from worst to best. So, number five is where we're ranking at the top of the list for people not doing well and experiencing high financial stress. And we want to implore you and urge you, as a county commission, to think through how you can support organizations like myself, like the one that I'm privileged to lead, again, Money Magnets Club, and like Fearless Brown Girls and others that are investing in work to help youth with financial literacy and financial health acumen. So not just the important things like saving and budgeting, but also how to make important decisions that are values-based. And I'd love to hear all the other things that are happening this afternoon or this evening that are also dovetailing with this important aspect. If kids have financial acumen and that they're able to think through the importance of decisions that they can make with money because they're also able to earn money and to save money, that's a much better set of choices to have to make than to have to buy a vape, right? Or things of that nature, other things that were brought up. So, again, we want to thank you through these supplemental income pilots that the county is supporting and other things that are happening currently to support financial health of individuals in Mecklenburg County, and we want to continue to implore you to do more of that, and especially look at the opportunities to support youth-focused initiatives that are helping to build strong, savvy individuals from a young age that are a function of them being able to be supportive and connected in their families and in the community at large. We have some things to share with you as well for additional information, and that concludes our comments. So happy fin- concludes our comments, so happy Financial Literacy Month.
Thank you, yeah, you can leave it with the clerk, and thank you so much. Mr., sorry, could you introduce yourself, sir?
My name is James Lockhart. Distinguished Board members, for almost two decades, I've served the citizens of Mecklenburg County, working with the Board of Elections in different roles and capacities, as a volunteer, a seasonal temporary employee, and currently as a full-time county employee. Over that time, my dedication to the voting process and my commitment to the people of this great city and county have been solid and without question. It has been a joy to serve my community. So, when I was approached by different BOE department managers inviting me to apply for various positions within the Board, it was an honor and testament to years of service. You see, my background and expertise is in the supply chain, transportation, and logistics, where I've worked in the private sector for the entirety of my career. To be recognized and hired to do something I strongly believe in, and at the same time possess the knowledge, skills, and training to do the job well was like a dream come true. As I went through the lengthy application process, I worked as a contract temporary employee at the Elections Warehouse. It was during that time in my initial days of employment thereafter, I began to witness a number of disturbing things. Over the past eleven months, I've witnessed intentional abuse and gross mismanagement of Mecklenburg County taxpayers' dollars in the form of payroll fraud, which has cost the taxpayers upwards of a million dollars in the 2024 elections alone, and millions of dollars over the years, numerous safety and liability risks which could cost the taxpayers potentially millions of dollars, drug, tobacco, and alcohol use in the warehouse facility and parking lot, and a complete disregard of Mecklenburg County taxpayers' dollars from those in management and leadership roles within the organization. I'm calling on this Board of Commissioners to launch an investigation into the operation and management of county resources at the Elections Warehouse in the Valerie C. Woodard Facility. The hiring of past and current managers, along with those in leadership roles at this facility, has put the county at risk and has cost the taxpayers untold dollars over the years and continues to do so today. Each year, the BOE hires numerous contract and temporary workers through various temp agencies to help facilitate the business of holding elections. During presidential elections, the number of temps can easily reach two hundred or more. This is where I have witnessed gross negligent of the management of these resources. Without any system of checks and balances, temporary workers are able to enter hours worked and in some instances encouraged by management to enter hours for work not performed. I myself, when working as a contract employee, was encouraged by management to participate in this fraud to which I was appalled at the suggestion and thus never did. I made my findings known to my manager and the director himself, only to be met with threats of termination if I was unable to go along. I've contacted the county's fraud hotline and even requested a meeting with the county manager's office, but I've heard nothing back. The people of Mecklenburg County deserve better. The hard-working people of Mecklenburg County deserve to have good stewards of their tax dollars, and this is not happening at the BOE warehouse where eighty million dollars of taxpayer-paid equipment and supplies are stored. So, I was left with no other options except to bring my findings to the people and to you who represent them. Most of the current staff at the facility do not live in Mecklenburg County, and a culture of "it's not my money" exists and is voiced aloud on occasion. I want to say I did not come to the decision to bring these allegations to the forefront without great trepidation in thought. I'm a native Charlatian, born and raised. I love my city and county.
Thank you so much for your comments.
And thus a Mecklenburg County taxpayer, and this abuse affects me in direct.
Sir, your time is up, and we need to be fair to everybody.
Sir, your time is up, please desist.
Sir, you're disrupting the meeting, and you will have to speak and leave the podium. If you do not stop, you are violating General Statute 143-318.17. Is Mr. Nichols in the room? All right. Our final set of speakers is a group, Kenneth Robinson, Danielle Brown, Jennifer Valmer, and Ashley Stevens. You may come on down. Madam Clerk, if you'll set the timer for ten minutes due to the size of the group.
I am Kenny Robinson, and I am the founder and president of Freedom Fighting Missionaries, and I am here with my staff and my board chair, who's sitting up top, and two of my children, and we are here today to first say thank you for the support that we have received from Mecklenburg County and the County Commissioners. Congratulations and surprise to Michael Bryant, who has been an amazing leader and advocate for all of the residents of Mecklenburg County, specifically our most vulnerable communities. Very proud to see him elevated to this position. We are getting very close to having no more firsts in Mecklenburg County in the city of Charlotte. No more first black police chief, no more first black sheriff, no more first black district attorney, and that is something to be very proud of. Thank you to our county manager, Deana Diario, to deputy county managers, Anthony Trauma and Michael Bryant, for believing in grassroots organizations and emerging nonprofits. We are here today and very proud to announce that the 1.1 million dollars in funding that was awarded to our organization in ARPA funds has been spent, has been validated, and we have done the work with the funds that was entrusted in us. We are very thankful to the ARPA team who has supported us diligently in making sure that the reports were in, that the funds were validated, that the receipts were checked and balanced, and it did reach the community in unspoken ways, and we are very, very glad of that. From that support, we have grown from 2022, when we first appeared here with, at that time, a staff of two, to now a staff of nine, all W2'd employees, all receiving benefits and incomes that some of them had never received in their life. We have also been now recognized from that support as a housing agency in Mecklenburg County, serving those who are justice-involved, and since receiving that funding, we have provided housing for over three hundred families, including over seven hundred children. Many of those children experienced homelessness in the McKinney-Vento program. Your funding support of 1.75 million dollars towards our upcoming housing project, Beatrice Place, is a Mecklenburg County first, and we are on track to have it completed by the fall of 2026. So, I want to thank all of our community partners, like Crisis Assistance Ministry, Criminal Justice Services, Housing Collaborative, the United Way of Greater Charlotte, and their Home Fall Initiative, Just Do It Movement, Caring, Foundation for the Carolinas, and Erica's Closet. We are thankful to be positioned to remain sustainable for the foreseeable future, and our growth that started here in this chamber three years ago has now been recognized on an international level and impacting hundreds of thousands of people around the world. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to my staff, supporters, funders, and our Board of Directors. And finally, thank you to my children, who have sacrificed the most with me while I'm out running around in the community trying to support others and haven't been able to spend as much time with them, so I'm thankful to my children for riding with me. Next, we have Danielle Brown.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Brown, and I serve as the Director of Social Work at Freedom Fighting Missionaries. I can serve in this role because of the funding that our organization received from Mecklenburg County, so thank you. In my role, I'm able to provide one-on-one sessions with all of our clients, making sure all of the children are enrolled in McKinney-Vento services, making sure the children and the family receive mental health services that they may need, whether if I am providing them myself or with the team, or connecting them with our community partners. I'm also able to guide our support staff as they are staffing cases, finding housing, going to court, doing family court as well, so providing them with the guidance on how to handle cases, and again, just thank you for the funding that you all have provided for Freedom Fighting Missionaries.
Good evening. Usually, I'm up here growling about something, but tonight, I want to talk about how we've been able to expand services. My name is Jennifer, and I do court support and for Mecklenburg County, for people who have cases in Mecklenburg County courts. Lots of times, we bail people out, and they have nowhere to go. We had one lady who had been incarcerated for about four months, and the day she got arrested, it was raining, so when she opened her possessions bag at the jail, everything was wet and moldy. So, the the funding that we were able to get allows us to make sure that everybody who comes out is going to have someplace to stay for at least a couple of days until they get more stabilized, permanent housing, which is a lot of times in transitional housing. So, also getting IDs, you can't get a job unless you have an ID, so all these little things sort of add up, and we're able to do those now. So, last year, we were able to also do trainings for court support to a lot of community partners that we have, and we went from eleven training sessions to twenty-eight. We had got twenty-two people released from jail. Lots of times, families are not able to come to court because they have to work, so that's where we come in. I've never met a judge anywhere who said that community support was not a critical piece of allowing somebody to be free. So, we provide that. We make sure that people get to their court dates, we make sure that they get to their lawyers, to their POs, or whoever whoever they have to get to, and which we were not able to do before. I do want to talk to Deana because I really appreciate how open you were to hearing about the different things that we were doing in the court system, and I know sometimes I am a little mean when I say stuff, but I appreciate you looking past all of that, the presentation, and being able to see, like, this has such a huge impact. This words, this work has an impact on families, not just on an individual that's going through the system or has been arrested, and but I want you to know that I appreciate how well you listen and to what's being said. We are the only city in the South that provides this service, the only one. There's other other cities, Los Angeles does it, Chicago does it, and of course, New York does it, but we're the only city in the South that's doing it, and it's such an impactful thing, and I don't often reflect, but I'm reflecting and saying, that's amazing. Like, it's amazing how many people, I mean, in in one year, a hundred people go through our programs, but it ends up impacting five hundred people, so thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Stevens. I stand before you today as a person who represents what is possible when people are given the right support, the right resources, and the opportunity to rebuild their lives. For years, I struggled with addiction. It was a disease that not only took control of my life, but also led me down a destructive path that ended me, that ended me with, ended with me in jails and prisons and losing the chance of raising my first son. Like so many others, I wanted to change, but I didn't know how. I didn't have the tools, the guidance, or the resources to break free from the cycle that had claimed my life for so long. After my last stint in jail in 2023, I entered myself into a year-long treatment program that would house me and my newborn baby. I was very adamant about finding housing for me and my son, so I heard about the Freedom Fighting Missionaries. I was uncertain at first if I would even qualify because of my criminal record. I was pleasantly surprised to see this organization didn't just see me for my past mistakes, they saw my potential. They connected me with the support I needed, such as housing, support on my job as a peer support specialist, and assigned me to the best social worker, Danielle Brown, whose encouragement makes all the difference as I'm turning my life around. I am proud to stand here today and say, because of the support I receive from Freedom Fighting Missionaries, my son and I have our own place to call home. I have an actual career as a peer support specialist at Promise Resource Network. I have a beautiful relationship with both my kids, and as of last week, I successfully completed probation. I am able to move forward with a future I never thought possible. But while my story is one for success, there are so many others out there who are still trapped in that vicious cycle, the cycle I was once in myself. Freedom Fighting Missionaries is doing everything they can, but they can't do it alone. Charlotte needs more resources. Charlotte needs more resources around real addiction treatment, transitional housing with wraparound services, more job training, better mental health services.
Thank you, thank you. And our final speaker of the night, Darrell Osborne.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for your service in representing Mecklenburg County, and again, providing Mecklenburg County with top-notch service. I come to you this afternoon for the Commissioners to consider a statue on the Charles Sefford Golf Course. The statue of a man represents a great man that has represented Mecklenburg County, and not only Mecklenburg County, but these United States of America. Charles Sefford, as a matter of fact, for those of you that don't know, was reared a quarter of a mile away from where the golf course sits today, one quarter of a mile, and during that time, he was not able to play on the golf course. I'm so familiar with that because in nineteen, in nineteen sixty-six, sixty-seven, I was not allowed to play on my high school's golf team, which was Miles Park High School, because they played at the country clubs. In nineteen ninety-four, I challenged my golf instructor, or the golf coach at UNC Charlotte, to to play the number-one player for his golf scholarship, denied. As you, as you may very well see, I'm wearing the shirt Uneven Lives, and uneven lives represent for us and for we as African-Americans, and not only African-Americans, but those of us that represent America, that are that that are in the minority, did not have the equal, the equal opportunity to participate in one of the country's most noted and wealthiest arenas when it comes to sports. I will now, you will now hear from Abra.
I'm sorry, there was only one person signed up to speak.
This is on the statue.
The time hasn't expired yet, so I guess it's fine to let the other person use the remainder of your time.
Hi, I'm Abra Kofi, and I'll be speaking of the matter on honoring Charles L. Sefford. So, I'll start with the basic introduction of who Charles L. Sefford is. Charles Luther Sefford was born on June two, nineteen twenty-two, in Charlotte, NC. He was first introduced to golf when he was a caddy, and even though he lived in a highly segregated area, it still did not stop him from pursuing his dreams of playing golf and breaking racial barriers. At the age of thirty-nine, he was able to obtain a PGA Golf Player Card, making him the first black African-American to play on the PGA Tour. But his journey did not stop there. He also had a few notable PGA victories, including the PGA Senior Championship in nineteen seventy-five. In two thousand and four...
Thank you. I know we all want to hear what you were going to say, so if you can, please send an email to the clerk, and she'll share with us the remainder of your comments, and if you can, also approach the clerk to give her your name so she can let the record, the minutes be accurate. And thank you so much for coming tonight, we really appreciate you.
One quick second, less than, less than a minute.
I did submit the information to the... It's really not, it's really not fair to others, but we would love to hear from you, so again, if you would please get her email, then we can all hear the remainder of what you wanted to share, and thank you. At this time, we will turn to appointments on our agenda, and the first appointment that we need to make, appointments we need to make is to the Women's Advisory Board. And the first appointment that we need to make, appointments we need to make is to the Women's Advisory Board. And I will note that the Women's Advisory Board recommends Ronya Chambers, Joelle Dug, Betty Gregory, Alexandria Foster, Michelle Tokpa, Stephanie Griffin, and Jacqueline Roseborough. At this time, I think what I want to do is see if there's any advocacy that Commissioners would like to make.
Thank you.
And I the Chair, I mean, I recognize Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to raise my voice for advocacy for Michelle Tokpa. Know her from the community and the work that she currently does, the advocacy work she currently does, and specifically in the political arena. So I would like to put my support behind her as one of the five.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Commissioner Powell?
I'd like to advocate for Joelle Dug. And it's it's self-explanatory. We really need someone with experience with healthcare disparities and community engagement and grant writing. So she's on my list. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunlap?
So, Madam Chair, I want to bring up an issue that we used to keep in the forefront. And and I just want to make sure that we haven't lost sight of it. While I think every person being recommended by the Advisory Committee, 100% of them are African American. We have tried to diversify our committees, and and I think we ought to continue to do that. So there's an opportunity for us to have Asian or specific Alanas. There's an opportunity for us to have Caucasians put on this committee. And I think we need to take the time to 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 consider those recommendations as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap, Commissioner Griffin.
Stephanie Griffin.
All right. Anybody else? Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
I'm Ronya.
See, I apologize.
I wanted to advocate for Ronya Chambers.
All right. Commissioner Leek.
Alexandria Foster.
Anybody else?
How many names have that been?
Well, we have five appointments. So I think everyone has had an opportunity to advocate. So at this time, if anyone would like to support Renee Barfield, please raise your hand.
Is this appointment or nominations?
I'm sorry, you're right. So this is only nominations unless we only had five. So at this point, let's just focus on nominations. So if you would like to nominate Renee Barfield, raise your hand.
We have five.
Once they're nominated, they're on the to be voted on or whatever. So if you get more than five, we'll have to bring it back. If you stick with these five, you can vote to appoint them.
Gotcha. Okay. So so Renee Barfield. Please raise.
Was she nominated?
No, you you wouldn't do it.
We're nominating.
Oh, 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 that's right. That's right. We have more than five? No, we actually have five.
You have five.
All right. So then we can nominate and appoint today, yes?
Yes.
I'm moved to nominate in a right second.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your grace. The motion having been made and seconded to nominate and appoint the five said names, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And the motion passes. All right. At this time, we will recognize and welcome Shahid Rana to the podium to address a business location expansion opportunity.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, fellow Commissioners, manager de Orio staff, and members of the public. I'm Shahid Rana, Deputy Director for the Office of Economic Development. And I'm here to present to you a business investment program grant for your consideration. Next slide. The project that I'm presenting before you today is through Detrapel Inc. Next slide. Detrapel Inc. is a clean tech advanced materials company specializing in synthesizing and manufacturing PFAS-free. That's a polyfluoroalkyl substances typically found on nonstick cookware. The company makes stain repellents for shoes, garments, consumer and commercial textiles, food packaging, healthcare, and technical textiles and electronics. The company is based in Farmingham, Massachusetts. It was founded in 2013, and they're considering a 40,000-square-foot building in Charlotte Mecklenburg for a research and development center that includes a clean clean room, manufacturing, and warehouse space. Next slide.
Excuse me, Mr. Rana. I think I needed to open the hearing before you began, so let me do that right now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Dunlap.
Will we open the public hearing to receive comments on the proposed business investment grant to Detrapel?
Second.
All right. The motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor of opening the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm sorry. Please continue.
Don't worry. So we'll for the person handling the slide, can you go back to the the opening slide, please? Well, good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to present to you a business investment program grant for your consideration. I'm Shahid Rana, Deputy Director for the Office of Economic Development. Next slide. I'm here to present to you Detrapel Inc. Next slide. Detrapel is a clean tech advanced materials company specializing in synthesizing and manufacturing PFAS. That's a polyfluoroalkyl protective substances and coatings that's typically found on nonstick cookware. The company makes stain repellents for shoes, garments, and consumer and commercial textiles, food packaging, healthcare, and technical textiles and electronics. The company was based is based in Farmingham, Massachusetts, and founded in 2013. The company is also considering a 40,000-square-foot building in Charlotte Mecklenburg for a research and development center that includes clean rooms, manufacturing, and warehouse space. The project includes a $3,500,000 project in new taxable investments with 1.5 million being in real property, which is the building, and $2 million in business personal property, which is equipment. They're looking to bring 35 new employment opportunities to Mecklenburg County at an average wage of $71,794. There's competition for this particular project in Fort Mill, South Carolina. The project is located in District 6 in the Steel Creek Submarket, just above Carol Winds off of I-77. Next slide. The project incentives includes a county consideration for a three-year 50% Business Investment Program Grant at the amount of $34,536. The City of Charlotte is also partnering with a three-year 90% VIP at $22,843. And our local contribution is needed to provide a state match for job training dollars, in which the state is providing up to $1,700 per new job at a grand total of $59,500. So the total package will be $116,879. The project employment includes 35 jobs, in which the company is preliminarily considering the relocation of those seven jobs from Massachusetts and hiring 28 jobs here locally. Those salaries are mainly above the actual average for our region. And the average mean salary for all of the jobs include, again, $71,794. The project impacts include an expected induced additional jobs of five jobs by the end of the grant year term, and is also expected to induce an additional cumulative net of $177,054 in new sales tax revenue by the end of year three. Detrapel is also expected to net the county additional $6,824 in revenue in its final year of the grant term for a cumulative net of $67,889 over the three-year grant term. In regards to corporate culture and community engagement, the company pays 80% of premiums for healthcare and 90% for dental insurance. They offer 401K plans with a 3% match. They also have a fund for professional development for their employees. Also offer unlimited paid time off, provide second chance hiring for certain roles. They also prioritize hiring veterans with approximately 25% of their workforce coming from local veteran communities. They've also won an award for their local hiring efforts with the veteran community from EY Global. So tonight, I'm requesting the Board of County Commissioners to vote and adopt a resolution to approve a three-year 50% Business Investment Program Grant to Detrapel Inc. for a not-to-exceed amount of $34,536 and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract. And this project was also endorsed by the Economic Development Committee. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rana. At this time, I'll go to the Chair of Economic Development, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, for any comments.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to to go forward with this action.
Thank you. I'll come to you back. I'll come back to you for that. Do you have any advocacy you want to make?
No, just as Shaw had mentioned, the entire Economic Development Committee all voted in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else want to be heard? Commissioner Powell?
So help me here on environmental impacts and research. Because I don't think people asked enough questions before all kinds of PFOS was in the world. And this is in PFOS-free protective coating. But my understanding previously was that they had a commitment to research and publishing their findings. Do you have any knowledge?
I don't have any information on their research, but I'm more than happy to follow up with you with that information.
I feel like it was in the first presentation we got because but I might be thinking of a different company. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dunlap?
Yeah, I want to assist Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell with her motion. So I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution to approve a three-year 50% Business Investment Program Grant to Detrapel Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $34,536 and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract. That's her motion.
Okay. I I want I want to carry that motion, but did anyone else want to be heard?
I want to make sure I understand the motion first.
Okay. I might ask you to repeat that in a minute. I want to get everyone opportunity to be heard on the presentation. Commissioner Griffin? Oh, Commissioner Leek?
My question was clarity on the motion. What are we saying we're going to approve?
Well, have Commissioner Dunlap read it again before you vote. Is that okay?
It's on the last page of your presentation as well.
I'm sorry.
It's on the last page here of your presentation, so page 11, in case that's helpful.
And this is the one in District 6, Steel Creek?
Yes.
That we talked about today?
No, that was a different.
That's a this is a different one. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yeah, just an observation and a question. Did I hear you correctly when you said unlimited paid PTO?
Yes, sir.
Question. And the second piece, there are 10 manufacturing positions to be hired locally. And we need to make every available opportunity, I think, in our workforce development capacity to at least give local people a chance to apply. It's not mandatory. The company certainly has the right to hire whoever they see fit. But at least it would be nice to have some local people get an opportunity for those jobs. I mean, it's just a phenomenal presentation in terms of the company's benefits and opportunities. So I appreciate the work of the Economic Development Committee and what you've done, and particularly where it's located in the Steel Creek area.
Thank you. Comments received. I appreciate it.
Can't hear you.
Comments received. Thank you.
All right. If everyone's had a chance to speak, who wanted to? Mr. Dunlap, will you repeat the motion again, please?
Susan, no worries. Now let her do it.
Okay. Okay. All right, sure. Let's see. So I want to make the motion. We already we didn't vote to close.
No.
So do you want to make it all in one motion?
Combination.
Okay, we're doing a combination then. Okay, so we're going to close the.
Public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. And I'm requesting that we vote to adopt a resolution to approve a three-year 50% Business Investment Program Grant to Detrapel Inc. for a not-to-exceed amount of $34,536 and to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute the contract. So moved.
Having been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. And at this time, thank you, Mr. Rana. I believe we have nothing on the manager's report.
That's correct.
All right. So we are now to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve those items not pulled from consent?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I will now turn to Commissioner Leek for item number 25-0145.
201.
25-0145.
Question I have here as it relates to the Tivola Senior Citizen Center is who received the contract? How much is the contract for? And is it open to the general public to apply?
So the the amount of the contract is $893,535. And the construction company that was it is being awarded the contract is Miles McLenna and then Construction Company. So this has already been bid. So no additional companies can bid at this time. That has passed.
No other company can?
Not now. It's too it's too late.
Okay. How are we notifying the general public that they are having a hearing to make sure that people can apply?
We have multiple ways that we advertise when we do these bids. And so, in fact, I believe this one was bid twice. And nobody bid the first time, and now they got a second bid for $893,000.
And the reason I ask, I've been asked that question several times. So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Having been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Commissioner Leek, item number 25-0157.
And this talks about abandonment of maintenance by the North Carolina Department of Transportation highway for portions of June Washam Road. What are they asking us to do?
So we would have to approve the NC DOT to allow them to abandon a portion of this right-of-way and maintenance of this road. And this is coming to us at the request of three property owners to, based on the realignment of the road, there's no reason that NC DOT has to continue to maintain this section of right-of-way. So they're asking us to improve the abandonment.
Is this within the city limits?
No, this is in the unincorporated parts of the county.
So they don't pay for maintenance of the road?
Well, not in this case.
So they're asking us to pay it?
No, no one's going to pay it. They're just going to abandon maintenance for this section.
All right then. So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Leek, item number 25-0168.
The selection of someone to give us an idea how the College Street parking deck would look. Does that belong to the county or to the city?
This would be a county-built parking deck to provide parking for the new main library.
Main library. Thank you. So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
The motion having been made and properly seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it passes. Item number 25-0171, Commissioner Leek.
We just did that one, parking deck.
I'm sorry. 01-72. Yes.
Yes. This is about Ryan White and AIDS. I'm supporting this because we still have a problem in this community and across this country as relates to meeting the needs of those who are living with AIDS. And I I wonder why we're giving out of grant money or not applying. I think we are applying for it. So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
The motion having been made and properly seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it passes. Item number 25-0176, Commissioner Leek.
Increase in local reentry counsel, Criminal Justice Service. Help me understand this, Madam Chair.
Yes, this is an increase in the grant amount of $15,540 for the Criminal Justice Services Reentry Counsel to be able to provide additional services on vocational training and emergency housing for clients who are recently released. housing for clients who are recently released from incarceration.
Are they receiving funds now?
Well, yes, this is in addition to what they had received before.
What have they received before?
They received a $50,000 grant, and now they're getting an increase of $15,540.
Add to $50,000.
Correct.
Are we sure how those funds are being spent?
Yes.
All right then, thank you. So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion having been made and properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. And the last item on the consent agenda, 25-0201, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you. Supplemental funds request. Grant application from what group is that, Dina?
So this is the North Carolina Council for Women and Youth Involvement, and so we're being, we initially received $123,000, but now they're increasing the funding by an additional $262,000 for a total grant amount of $385,000.
So they're asking to increase their grant?
They received additional grant dollars, but the board has to approve them being able to spend that money, which is what we're doing here tonight.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So moved, Madam Chairperson.
Second.
The motion having been made and properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that passes. And I think I may have overlooked carrying a vote for item number 25-0171, 7th and College Street parking deck, which I believe Commissioner...
You did. You did. Yes, ma'am.
Well, we talked about it, but the clerk doesn't have a vote for it, so I'm going to call the vote again.
So moved.
Just to be sure.
Second.
Thank you. The motion having been made and properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it passes once or maybe twice. All right. So at this time, we will turn to Commissioner Reports. We'll start on my far left, three minutes. Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Oh, no report.
This morning, I had the opportunity with Commissioner Griffin and Dina and Michael Bryant and Anthony Schottman, several others, to attend the celebration of the opening of Forest Point Place, which is the hotel that the county bought, and Roof Above is going to operate for our most vulnerable homeless neighbors, our seniors. And it was just really such an incredible thing that we're doing, and I'm so glad I was there to witness it, and I'm so proud of the county for taking this on. The money came from ARPA funds, and we were continued to support, and Roof Above is just the best organization to run it, and I'm excited to have been there. And thank you to AFM and Robert Nesbit's team and Dina's team and everybody who was involved. It really was, it's incredible that we're doing this. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
Let me say thank you to Dina also, because I came to the board with the idea, old motels and hotels that we could buy and put people in there to refresh them. So again, thank you to you for your leadership and your hard work and your love for the county and the love for the people of the county, and that's what really matters, and especially loving nine folk, okay? And that's hard, isn't it? Thank you.
Commissioner Griffin.
I just get to, Commissioner Meyer, the county hit a home run on this one in terms of Forest Point. It's just phenomenal. I wasn't on the board when you made the original vote with ARPA funds, but I can assure you from personal experience and professional experience, this was a home run for homeless, and I was here to see and hear about the encampment over off of 11th and 277 when people were camping out, and just to know that there are some of the very same people that are in this facility. And there's a phrase, and I think it might be United Way or something, "A place called home." You know, they've had a place for a while, but this is truly a home, so I really, really appreciate all of those involved in making this happen, and that is the kind of thing I wish we had more ARPA money to do, something similar. But these are 55-year-old plus that found themselves in unstable housing or homeless to be able to now say they have a place called home. And this not only deals with personal dignity and sense of self-worth, but it's just phenomenal opportunity for families. There are 92 family opportunities, I think, they said there are probably 70-some people there now, but there's 92 families that have a place called home, and I think it's phenomenal with the wraparound services. Thank you to the entire team that created this win, and it was truly a win, not just for Mecklenburg County, but it's a win for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Commissioner Townsend-Angrym.
I just want to say that I had a flurry of activity over the last couple of weeks, and I'm really excited to be on the commission, number one, but also to see the good, the positive, the partners. All of the partners that we have, they work so hard, and then they build this whole family of volunteers who ask for nothing, you know, other than just to help their community. And I'm so inspired by that, especially because of the current environment that we're in right now, knowing that we're going to have to tighten up and work together even more. So, you know, organizations like Nourish Up, formerly Friendship Trades, and...
Loves and Fishes.
Loves and Fishes, thank you. As well as, you know, Habitat for Humanity, and there's some others. But I was just so delighted and just, my heart was warmed. It gave me, it inspires you, gives you the energy to go on, you know, because you see so much heartbreak day to day. But our county, our county is something special. I really believe that. So just want to thank all of our partners, and especially all of those volunteers who just do so much. The Habitat for Hum... I'm sorry. The Nourish Up new facility that's 90,000 square feet, that's in District 2, Commissioner Lee, over close to the Brookshire, they have a free grocery store, and the produce was beautiful. Everything was just so lovely. They have a teaching kitchen, they have office, you know, conference space for other nonprofits and businesses and things of that nature. So I just want to say that I'm so appreciative of our county staff as well as our community and volunteers. Thank you.
Ms. Powell.
So in December, December 19, 2024, WFAE published a report about a scathing audit for North Carolina Oversight of Nursing Homes. Many of us have toured some nursing homes. And sometimes when you get these phone calls from people, you know, maybe it's one family, but I've been getting calls from multiple families, and I have experienced one of the top two most frustrating things since being elected, trying to get help for the families. I just can't even describe it. Trying to get help for the families, trying to help them find a path to get connected to resources that can help them. And so I've talked to Commissioner Griffin about this in the past. I've talked to Kevin Leonard about it at NCAACC, talking about, you know, should this be on our legislative agenda? Because what happens when the state is unresponsive and we don't have authority? And families are looking for help for their loved ones. And so it's not just nursing homes where you have elderly people, it's nursing homes where you have elderly who are so compromised, and then memory care facilities where they don't even know what's happening. And so I'm just so frustrated right now of the bureaucracy of trying to get help, and, you know, we can, county staff is helping as much as they can, but the state has authority. And so I feel like as a board, we need to come together, however that is, brainstorming to being a voice to our state leaders, that it cannot continue like this. Families have to have a way to get help without having to wait for weeks and months for all kinds of inspections and all of that kind of stuff. People are suffering, and I just keep thinking about what it would have been like if I went to the hospital one day and there was one staff person for a whole wing, what that would have been like. It would have been all calling 911, and there would have been a response. But it's like slow motion response for these nursing homes and the memory care facilities, and it cannot continue like this. And so we can't just say, well, it's like this all the way over, you know, we can't just say that. We have to do something. And so I'm just saying this out loud because I can't sleep. Like, my day started off, my day started off with a family member telling me, apologizing for the place that she chose, but it was close to her house, and I said, please don't apologize for where you chose. Anyway, you know, it's just, this is really hard on me because this is human suffering, and we should be able to help.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunlap.
First of all, let me say I share the concern. Just wanted to announce two public events this week. Had the opportunity to attend an event at UNC Charlotte where they announced being a top research university. I think that's important to the entire community because you don't have those every day, and it's one of the top universities, research universities in the entire country. And the second event is the first performance in the Carolina Theater. And the reason why that's so significant is that this theater has been closed for more than 40 years. And in fact, the last time I entered the theater when it was opening, African-Americans had to sit in the balcony. And so to think that this theater has reopened with no such restrictions, and it is a sight to see. And I understand that that was the way it was originally designed and built, so I would encourage any of you, when you have the opportunity to attend an event at the Carolina Theater, that you take advantage of that. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Thank you.
Can I have a second chance at my commissioner report?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, I should have said this, Commissioner Dunlap, thank you for the reminder. We have an event coming up this Thursday, and I was looking furiously for the time, I believe it's at 9:00.
9:00 AM.
Okay, 9:00 AM. It's coffee with commissioners, and it's going to be this first one, I believe it's the three of us, Commissioner Altman, Commissioner Meyer, and myself, and we're hoping that the community will show up. Even if you haven't already RSVP'd, you're still able to do that at Amelie's at Park Road Shopping Center, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. There's not an agenda, this is just a time for us to dialogue with whoever's there and whatever topics they want to talk about. So looking forward to that. And then on April 7, which is Monday night, the League of Women Voters is having an education forum, and I will be on that panel, and I believe, let's see, it's at Caldwell...
Caldwell Presbyterian.
Caldwell Presby... Thank you. Caldwell Presbyterian. So I hope the community will come out and support education. So thank you for the grace to have that chance again. Thank you.
I don't want, okay, you got, make it super fast.
Thursday, April 17, is the senior day with the government, so please be here if you can, at 10:00 AM, and we'll be through at 2 for my seniors.
All right.
Working on this.
And I will, yes, ma'am. I will round it out to say thank you to Rebecca Herbert for a fantastic, and the whole team for fantastic opioid summit, annual summit, very important. Thank you for our county manager for always being there. Mr. Bryant, we are at the beginning of a really exciting transition, and I just want to take one more opportunity to say how personally thrilled I am, and it's just a win for the whole community. And this is the beginning of the long goodbye to Dina, and so I'm not going to miss an opportunity to lift you up and say how personally so grateful I am and how much I admire, respect you, how grateful I am to you. You are amazing.
Thank you.
I want to thank also our attorney, our clerk, our whole clerk's office for navigating us through this process it was done with, utmost professionalism. I think it was a stellar job, not easy, a lot of moving parts. Thank you to Andy Fair and all of Public Information for making the big launch today. We want all of the community to know about our incoming county manager and be there to support him and his work. So thank you so much to the whole team for that great liftoff. I would like to recognize and thank the Chair of the committee overseeing the county manager search, our Chairman Emeritus, George Dunlap. You did a phenomenal job. We benefited so greatly from your judgment. Thank you for helping me tonight at various moments. It's good to, you know, we need our senior members of the Board of County Commissioners to keep us straight, so thank you. And last but not least, thank you to our amazing Chairman, Mark Jarrell, for continuing to lead this ship in great directions. At this time, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Before you take the motion, Madam Chair, I think the clerk and I were trying to find, I think the item that was missed was 0168, not the one you voted on, so that one needs to be taken forward.
All right, let's turn back around. Which one was it?
Stormwater program item.
Which one is it? Okay, so item number 25-0168, Stormwater Program Hazard Mitigation, Catawba River Flood Plane Acquisition, Hardwood Lane.
So moved.
Second. Although it's important.
Rediscussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the pass is... We're... It's...